Very good. Welcome, everybody, to our first Village Board meeting since the pandemic started. It's our first live meeting in, I think, over 15 months. So it is July 8th, 2021. Welcome to the Village of Woodbury Village Board Meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So, since this is our first live meeting in quite a while, I'm just going to remind everybody, board members and public alike, that if you're going to be speaking tonight, make sure that the mic is on, you're close to it, and that everybody can hear you, otherwise they won't pick it up on the recording. It's been a while, so, just a reminder. Okay, so first up this evening, we have a couple of public hearings. First is a public hearing that is continued from the June 10th and June 24th meeting to entertain public comment on a proposed non-exclusive television franchise agreement between the village and cable vision of Wapentures Falls, Inc., a wholly owned subsidiary of Altice USA, Inc. Is there anybody in the public that has any comment on this? Rather than go by row? Okay. This hearing will need to be continued as the application is still before the Department of Public Service and can't be closed until they provide further guidance. However, at the suggestion of Attorney Nugent, the hearing should be pushed out for about 60 days. So with that said, I'm asking for a motion to continue the hearing to the August 12th, 2021, meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, but aye. Little different than Zoom. Little different. Okay, next up is another public hearing, introductory local law 10 of 2020, building moratorium. This is a public hearing to entertain public comments on revised introductory local law 10 of 2020, the purpose of which is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Village of Woodbury, and to maintain the status quo of residential and non-residential development in the village while the Board of Trustees completes its review of the status of the current village water supply, including the addition of the Troutbrook well and its impacts on the village water system, to determine whether the water system is reasonably adequate to serve current and future property owners and approved and pending land development, or whether there is a need to develop additional sources of water both within and without existing village water supply areas in order to meet anticipated demands. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on June 29th and 30th of this year. And just one more comment, the moratorium exempts all projects that have completed SECRE. This means that building permits and certificates of occupancy would be able to be issued for projects that fall into this category. The moratorium, however, does not exempt municipal projects, and this means the highway department's salt shed and the town's pool would not be permitted to continue. So before we go out to comment, I'd like to suggest we amend the introductory local law so as to exempt projects by the village and the town of Woodbury. So, do we have any comments from the board on that before we move on to public comment? Any thoughts, yea or nay, on that? You're all okay with doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so then we will go out to public comment. Anyone in the first row? Neil, please, approach. We could bring a mic to you if you want.
You should.
Just being kind. Is that on, Jeff?
It's not on.
No. No, on the side, Daniel.
Jeffrey's coming.
You gotta hold it on. You gotta hold it till it comes on.
Hold it till it turns green.
Neil Kraus, Highland Mills. I'm also co-chair of the village's land preservation committee. I'm in favor of this moratorium. I think the village and the residents would be well served by this, by taking a step back, allowing, I believe you've hired a hydrogeologist to take a look at the water supply. I don't think we're in a situation where the village is, like, right now or next week going to run out of water, but eventually we have to take efforts to look at our water, to serve water and stuff. I mean, a lot of people will say, why do we still have a moratorium where you can only water from 7:00 to 9:00? Well, a lot of the water that we've gotten recently, that's out in the Hudson already. You know, that's water that has come down so hard that it doesn't soak into the ground to recharge our water aquifer. And I think that the more, I always equate it to a glass of water with a straw in it. And with one, if there's one straw in it, and people are, and somebody's drinking out of that straw, and then you put other straws in, and other people start drinking out of the same glass, it goes down much faster. And I think we have to be worried about, right now, ourselves, but also our children in the future. So I think the board is taking a smart move on this. I think it's for six months. We may need longer when we get into it, but I'm in favor of the law.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone in the second row? You, sir. Third row? And Maria's rising in anticipation of saying back of the room.
Maria Hunter.
Good evening.
I just have a couple of questions of the law, the way it's written is, in the first paragraph, second sentence, well, the first sentence, it says, "to maintain the status quo of residential and non-residential." I understand what status quo means, but I'm not sure what you're trying to explain in the law itself to other people who might not understand that. And then, in the second sentence, it's come to the attention of the Board of Trustees through detailed reports. Where can we find those detailed reports that you're mentioning in this law so that other residents can look at this? I'm just curious as to why that's written in there. Is it past, present, or future reports? Also, it says on the second section, section two midway, and it says, "including the addition of the Troutbrook well." Has that not gone online? I thought that was supposed to be online when WP3 was being built. So is that one, or is there two separate wells?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last comment about the well.
The one on Troutbrook.
Okay.
Is that one online, or is that in addition to what was supposed to have been approved with WP3, Woodbury Junctions?
So, there, well, okay, so, I'll start with that one. I assume those are the rest, are you done with the questions?
I have a couple more.
Let's start with those. So with regard to the Troutbrook well, there is one being dug right now that should be, I spoke with Mickey just earlier in the day about this as an update, that well should be completed physically by the end of the month, and then fully online with piping to the main supply and tested and approved by the Department of Health and so on by the end of the year. So that should be bringing a substantial amount of water to the supply by the end of the year.
Is that the original one from WP3, or is that in addition to?
No, that's an additional well that we, that was the well that we had projected to start later this year, early next year, but we got a little money ahead of time that we were able to get started on that, so we jump-started that process.
Okay. In section three.
I'm sorry, Maria, I just want to go back to the other two questions first before you move on. With regard to reports, you asked if they were existing reports or future reports, and the answer to that would be yes, both.
Both?
There are some existing reports from H2M that we already have, and the hydrogeologist's report, as Neil referred to, hasn't even begun yet, but that will begin very soon, and we should have that at some point in the next couple of months.
Okay. And then, on section three. I understand the six months, I have no problem with that. It says, "no building or other permits," and I understand where your exceptions are. I understand that part. But the way it's stated on the front, it says, "a moratorium on certain permits." Are you opening yourselves up by saying "certain permits" and/or just saying "permits" and not taking that word "certain"? I'm just, I'm not an attorney.
I'll ask Kelly for further clarification, but our intention is not to restrict regular building permits like decks, pools, additions, things of that nature. So, correct, Kelly, that's what we're referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. So, like, any development, I only know of one right now that's being built, which is across the high school. Are they going to be continuing because they have SECRE approval? So are we going to continue allowing them to?
Yes, SECRE's been done on that, so that's not going to be restricted by this.
All right. And then, in section three. Not the sentence that begins it also, but the one that says, "any applications for approval or permits not otherwise exempted from this moratorium shall be proceed." It just seemed, shall be allowed? Okay. I just, thank you, because I know it didn't sound right to me when I read it.
Maria, what section was that? Because I.
Three. It's on section three, "moratorium imposed." There's a section that says, "shall be proceed." Council said it should be, "shall be allowed through the necessary processes, processes at the option of." So that was just the one word I picked up on. And I didn't quite hear what Mayor Egan, that you said before, the pool and something else, they're exempt from this?
They're not exempt from it right now, but we are going to change the language to exempt municipal projects for the village and the town.
So, all right, so you're going to exempt them? Okay.
That's what we just talked about earlier.
So.
Obviously, we can talk about it again.
All right, so, I guess I'm hearing two different stories, that with the town pool, the town court, or even the salt shed, are they going to be exempt from this? Or you have to discuss that?
Well, apparently, we're going to discuss it again, but my comment earlier was that this means the highway department's salt shed and the town's pool would not be permitted to continue. Before we go out to comment, I'd like to suggest we amend the introductory local law so as to exempt projects by the village and town of Woodbury. That's the question I asked earlier.
So that would be municipal projects.
That was my, that was the intent of my question, yeah, so we'll have a discussion after we finish this.
We're going to have a discussion on that. At this point, as I said before, we need this because we do have a problem with water. I don't know where the failure came from with prior years with zoning and planning, where we approved all these projects, where we were told we had enough water, and that's why certain projects were approved. Granted, some projects became larger than what most of us thought would happen, and so, I applaud the board for trying to put this together for six months, but I would just hate to see that any municipal projects, because it would be horrific if we couldn't move forward with the pool in Central Valley, where everyone from last year and this year, and we're, you know, anticipation of it being open, and I, you know, I would hate to see that not happen, and then the current with the town court, where we need to, the roof has been taken care of, but the siding has to be taken care of because, you know, asbestos from years ago, and the salt shed, which is needed, I would hate to see those projects not be able to go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Anyone at all have any comments on this with regard to the public hearing? Okay, with no further comments, I'm going to be asking for a motion to close the public hearing but accept written comments to the village clerk until close of business on July 16th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Aye.
How about aye?
No.
Trustee Graziano voted no, the rest voted aye.
Okay.
Okay. So before we move on to public comment on agenda items, why don't we, can we have that discussion now, Kelly? Okay, let's have that discussion now. So apparently, there was some confusion earlier with regard to the exemption of municipal projects for the town and the village. Why don't we start with you, Chris?
The reason I said that is, I'm a little confused also, is because, you know, the agenda item to, for the resolution for the town not to comply with the planning board process, is that automatically exempt them without changing this law?
No, that was two different things.
I just want to make sure if they're exempt from the planning process, then it.
You just make sure you speak into the mic, Chris?
That's exempt from the planning process.
We can't hear you.
This would be, oh, I turned it on.
No, that was, I was talking to Chris. When he turned away, I just couldn't hear him at all.
Okay. First of all, the resolution hasn't been adopted yet, so I wasn't sure how that was proceeding. But second of all, I have been informed that some of the SECRE actions have been concluded on those pool courthouse projects, but I don't know what else in that six-month period would come up that may be related to those or may need to be covered, which is why I suggested exempting those. I know that the salt shed is one that would need to be constructed relatively soon, I think by August is when the shipment comes in, which is why I raised that to the board as a concern.
And that's a village project as opposed to a town project?
Well, then, I'm fine. I just thought it was, we were doing a double exemption, because if we were exempt, if we were looking to exempt something from the planning process, I figured that's automatically exempted from anything because it's exempt from the planning process.
No, that resolution's about the ARB approval process.
And they still have to get, like, the building permit and comply with the building codes and things like that, which they're aware of and they're fine with, but the resolution later was, again, yes, they don't have to go through the ARB. Okay.
No, we're doing the double.
Oh, trying to just cover all the bases.
Any other comments, Chris?
No, that was it.
Okay. Trustee Gomez?
I'm in agreement, but my question was, well, this is separate from the other resolution we're talking about, right?
Yes, it is. These are two different things, yeah.
Yep, so, this is fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Trustee Birick?
Yep, I'm in agreement.
What comments? Trustee Gomez?
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Now, I have no further comments, so we'll just move on with the agenda at this point. I think we're, we're short a mic down there.
We are.
Very good. All right, so let's move on to public comment on agenda items only. So anybody in the first row have any comment on any of the agenda items? Second row? Third row? In the back, Maria?
On, under new business letter C, your discussion slash approval of planner to work on land preservation plan, I always ask this at every municipal board, are you having a set limit so that we don't have?
Yes.
Okay. You'll discuss that, I presume, when we?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be part of the motion.
All right, perfect. That was one of my, because surprises always happen, so that was one of the things I wanted to ask. And, the well drilling up in Amder Park, is that why there's no outside use at all?
Up there, yeah.
Posted on the village website for them?
Yes.
They can't use any water?
The second well that we had anticipated rehabbing this year went way down, and that needs to be done immediately because there's just not enough water. Plus, the first well that we rehabbed in the fall went down, what, five gallons a minute, Mickey? Went down 10 gallons a minute from what it had been up until just a week or two ago, so.
And I, being, I, that Amder Park is a small entity under its own, is this their own water district?
Yes. Well, we call it a water service area, not a district anymore, but yes.
So, they will be absorbing this over $10,000?
Consolidated, will not be touched for that, yeah, cannot be.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on public, excuse me, any public comments on agenda items? Okay. We will move on to administrative business. So I'm asking for a motion to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held June 24th, 2021.
I'll make that.
I'm sorry, was that Chris?
No, Jesus.
Jesus, trustee Gomez. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about aye? Approval of abstract, looking for a motion to approve abstract number three containing vouchers 210170 through 210231 totaling $121,757.95.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looking for a motion to appoint Matthew Soldaviero? Close? Okay. To the position of full-time water, wastewater maintenance worker with a start date of August 2nd, 2021, and an hourly rate of $28.30.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you for the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have an extra item under admin, need to reappoint Sandy Capriglioni, so I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Sandra Capriglioni to the planning board with a term that will be June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2026. This reappointment was needed to be done again because the Elder Board Office was not administered in a timely fashion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Thank you. Old business. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution that was presented by council stating that the town need not comply with ARB for courthouse and pool renovations as presented by Kelly.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about aye? Okay, new business, resolution for benchmarking. Correspondence was received from the Orange County Department of Planning as part of the New York State Clean Energy Communities and Climate Smart Communities Incentive Programs, looking to partner with willing municipalities to assist them in becoming certified CEC and CSC communities. Doing so enables communities to receive access to grants and funding by completing New York State's suggested high-impact actions. One such action is electricity benchmarking. The state encourages municipalities to adopt a resolution and asks that their electricity usage for buildings over 1,000 square feet be entered into an Environmental Protection Agency program. The county offered to do this service, and last week, the village clerk's office provided electric bills for the past few years. The correspondence further explained energy benchmarking is the process of measuring a building's energy use, tracking that use over time, and comparing performance to similar buildings. The village board did adopt this policy at its January 12th, 2017, meeting, so it doesn't need to be done again. Village Clerk Potvin was asked to provide the county planning department a certified copy of the resolution for their files. And that's been done. And that has been done. So now, approval of proposal for the well drilling at Amder Park, looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the estimate from Rourke Well Drilling, Inc., to pull a pump and deepen the well to 700 feet at Amder Park at a cost of $10,579.50. This is an emergency purchase due to the lack of water supply in this area.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, but aye. Okay, discussion and approval for planner to work on land preservation plan. So at budget time, a quote was received from NPV, the village planners, to prepare an open space preservation plan. The quote received was comprehensive and was estimated at approximately $24,000. So I'm going to be looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proposal submitted by NPV for the preparation of an open space preservation plan at a cost not to exceed $24,000.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Jesus, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have an extra item? We need a resolution authorizing the submission of consolidated funding applications, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the submission of consolidated funding application resolution.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Andrew?
Andrew, Andrew and, Chris? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Keep raising my hand like we're on TV. Can't break that.
I'm not going to break you, bunch of people.
Just wait.
No, just wait. All right, so that concludes regular business, and now we can go out to public comment. So we'll do it row by row again. Anybody from the first row? Second row? Third row?
Hello. My name is Martha Lopez. I'm a resident of Highland Mills for the past 23 years. Despite what some would like to make you believe, I do not serve on any committee or any board for the town of Woodbury, nor am I their spokesperson. I was forced to come here today to defend myself against board members who inappropriately use this platform for their personal vendettas. As elected officials, you should be ashamed of yourselves. Trustee Giacomoza, Giacomoza, I am truly confused by your actions during the last board meeting. On one hand, you admittedly stifled freedom of speech by censoring comments on the village's public Facebook page, but then you go on and you pub, on a publicly taped forum, and read the comments aloud and describe them as slanderous. How is it slanderous when I've personally witnessed you mock and laugh about your passive-aggressive behavior towards village employees? I don't, maybe you don't understand what the meaning is, but it's not slanderous. During the last meeting, we've even witnessed you claim that another trustee consistently breaks the law because he has a get-out-of-jail-free card. When it made him uncomfortable, what did you do? You laughed. Maybe the problem is that you're so busy pointing the finger at everyone else that you fail to see your own shortcomings, one of them being how you openly state that you are unwilling or have no desire to work with the town board. I ask you, do you believe you can ever stop making your position as trustee about you and put Woodbury first for a change? Why wouldn't you do all you can to repair that relationship? This makes me wonder what your agenda is now and what it would be as mayor. It's a shame that you're running unopposed, because I fear what your tactics would look like given more power. Abraham Lincoln stated, "Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, you give him power." The thought of you in power makes me shudder. I wish that it was only your behavior that I was concerned about on this board, but it's not. CJ, you should think long and hard before you react emotionally on Facebook, because in your own words, your words, if you're going to serve in this community, you must have thicker skin than that. Okay? Those were your words. I obviously need to remind you that as an elected official, you are here to serve us all. Now, let this sink in for a moment. As a village taxpayer, you're here to serve me too. Okay? You are not here, you're not here, you don't have a right to use your position to state that you want to root out any community member. That's not, that's not your role as a trustee. You're not here to root out any community member who questions you, nor threaten any of us with litigation for stating opinions or facts. If you, if you thought your threats would make me run and hide, you are sadly mistaken, and you don't know me at all. Laughing at the mention of someone's culture or ethnicity is both insensitive and racist. Okay, let me say that again, racist. To then threaten me with litigation is a sad attempt by you at keeping those details quiet. I deserved better than that, and as a whole, this community deserves better than that. It is shameful that you believe your big words, your long dissertations, and your public threats would invoke fear in anyone within this community. Let me remind you again that you were elected to serve, not silence or threaten us. What you and the board did on March 15th during my professional interview for the Revitalization Committee was culturally insensitive, and although those words did not come out of your mouth, the fact that you laughed made you complicit. It's unfortunate that the board doesn't recognize how offensive, racist, and discriminatory the greeting and the subsequent remarks were. What's even worse is that despite my emails to the board about the way the events of that day made me feel, no one had the decency to apologize. Instead, I was faced with threats of litigation by you. Okay? Go ahead, babe. You still making the threats? You still making those threats? You still, so now you promise? You promise what? Okay, okay. Speak to my attorney. Speak to, I'll let my attorneys do the talking. Sadly, you and Andrew are running unopposed, and this concerns me, as I do not want to see a town run by a group of people who don't see anything wrong with weaponizing ethnicities weaponizing ethnicities just so they can gain leverage and assert their power. What's even more concerning is that every candidate, handpicked, to run for the town board is also lacking diversity, despite minorities now making up nearly 50% of Woodbury. I plead with this Woodbury community to take a stand and demand better because all of Woodbury deserves better.
Anyone else in the back row?
Good evening. Ray Hernandez from Highland Mills. If I may, can I approach the board to hand over some documents?
Anything you have can, has to go through the clerk. This has to be submitted through Desiree.
Can I proceed? Or should I wait?
Oh, go ahead.
Good, okay, thank you. Just want to start by saying it's great to, to meet in person, to have both boards be able to, to meet and not do this Zoom computer stuff. It was driving everybody crazy, I'm pretty sure. So it's great to see everyone in person. Again, for the record, my name is Ray Hernandez, and I am a resident of Woodbury, a volunteer and a, and a chairperson of the Parks Committee under the Parks Department. I was the one heading the First Responders Day held on June 12th of this year. I would first like to discuss a comment made that the first responders, or comments that were made, that the first responders was a political event. Rest assured, it was not a political event. It was far from it. It was a beautiful event to show appreciation to our first responders. It was, it was far from politics. I will reinstate that the first responders was to honor our police officers, EMS personnel, and fire department, servicemen and women. And we were proud to have delivered, raised and delivered $700 in donations to the food pantry. Thank you to our community residents who participated and made these donations possible. I am thankful for the Assistant Chief, I believe Chris Carr Too, Mayor Egan, Village Trustees Burke, and Graziano for attending the First Responders Day. Thank you for taking part in this event, showing your support, and handing out awards to the respective departments that serve us as a community. With that said, I would like to point out an inconsistency with what the fire department have been stating and what has been recently advertised as a fundraiser on Facebook. And make no mistake, I support all first responders. Being an NYPD detective for 20 years, serving in the Cornwall Fire Department for eight years, you can't find any other person that would support our first responders than me. I support, this is not an attack whatsoever on our fire department and their personnel. So let me make that clear. Recently, there's been an advertiser fundraiser on Facebook. The fire department's chief, Carr Too, posted a T-shirt fundraiser on One Woodbury, a political Facebook page promoting candidates that are running for public office. And assigned on their posts, collections for set T-shirts to a candidate to collect that is running for town supervisor. In addition, it appears that the candidate's personal email was listed instead of the fire department's email. Now, I might be wrong, maybe Gmail does belong to the fire department, but I don't believe that Gmail would belong to the fire department. The fire department is a department that services the needs of our entire community and should not be used or given the implication that is being used for politics. I served as a volunteer firefighter, as I stated earlier, for eight years, and I know that the social side of the firehouse has a president, a vice president, a secretary, and a treasurer, and deals with all the fundraising aspects of the firehouse. Today, I address this inconsistency and ask why is the fire department getting involved in town-village politics if it, if it asserts that the department must not get involved in politics? Even Chief Carr One, Pat, spoke numerous times on Zoom meetings that the fire department is not about politics, quote-unquote, "We don't do politics." And if you look at the Facebook comment on the T-shirts, it was posted on One Woodbury, which is a political group. Now, this just doesn't look right. We should not be using the fire department and using a member, I mean, I don't know how many members there are in the fire department, but so conveniently, you're going to use the one guy that's running for town supervisor for residents of this community to contact to get T-shirts. I think that is very inappropriate, and the village board should put a stop to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Maria, anything? Okay. Last call for public comment. Okay, we'll move on to board member comment. So I'll start first. I want to update everyone on outdoor dining. So trustee Graziano had sent us all an email yesterday with regard to a new law that was just signed by the governor. And as I mentioned at the end of last meeting, when the governor's executive orders expired and were not renewed, I was no longer able to issue local executive orders allowing outdoor dining. But as I said, the governor just yesterday signed into law a bill that permits restaurants and bars to utilize municipal property for these purposes. There's a couple of differences, though, from the EO's that were done earlier in the year during COVID that allowed outdoor dining. So first, it only applies to businesses that are licensed to serve alcohol. Second, it only allows these businesses to extend their operations to municipal properties such as sidewalks or roads in the event of a road closure. Unlike the executive orders, it does not allow for the use of private property like parking lots for outdoor dining. Lastly, it's only valid for one year until the governor extends it, and these businesses would also have to apply to the state liquor authority for, for an extension of their premise permits for liquor. The good news, though, is that under those conditions, restaurants can again offer outdoor dining. So any that do want to do that, we'd be able to issue temporary use permits through the building department as we did before during COVID. So next, a brief water update. We talked about water several times tonight. The water tanks, according to the water department, continue to remain full, so thank you to all of the residents that are honoring our outdoor restrictions on water use. As it was stated earlier, that's between 7:00 PM and 9:00 PM in the evening. The rehab of well number five is continuing, and we expect that to finish within the next couple of weeks. We also expect much higher water flow from this well after the work is done, and that should allow us to lift restrictions by the end of this month. The new well, as I mentioned earlier, is moving forward nicely. We should have that well dug and tested by the end of the month, and we're on target to have this well fully operational and pumping into the system by the end of the year. So that's it for my comments. Thank you. So I'll go down to the end. Trustee Graziano?
All righty. You won't need a snack tonight. I'm going, I'm going small after the last two meetings. First off, I'd like to thank everybody, and it's glad to see everybody back in person again. I've been one of the biggest proponents of coming back in person to having board meetings and live board meetings. I just like the live action, and I don't like the little Hollywood Squares Brady Bunch kind of look, but, so I'm glad to have that. I'm also glad that I got to watch my son and Andrew's daughter last week in the graduation that they had at Boulder Stadium. It was so good to see all the kids actually get together and have a graduation where we really thought for a long time during the year we weren't going to be able to have that. So it was really a nice thing to see them all together, throwing their caps in the air and having that camaraderie that you, you can only get from having a graduation and, and being together with your friends for that, you know, final time in high school. So that was a fantastic thing, and I congratulate all the children and, and hopefully, you know, I, I said something one day, and I still believe this to the end, is I think this group of students going forth in the world is probably the best-prepared group of young men and women that we've ever seen in decades. They've gone through a global pandemic, they've gone through changing of how they learn, going in and out of school, learning how to social distance, being devoid of social constructs and contact for big portions of the year. They got to watch the worst of what politically this country has to offer with the complete and utter breakdown of sides, who's versus who, you know, and my, you know, my thoughts on that is completely ridiculous, but, and we, they've even witnessed an attack on our own Capitol. So, you know, they've seen a lot, and they've been through a lot, and they've seen the worst of what the generation before them actually does and says. So I'm thinking that there's hope for our future, as they are the ones that are going to carry that forward, and I think they're really well-prepared for that, and I'm really glad to send them off into the world and, and can't wait to see what they do with their, their future and improve our future of our country. So that's it I got. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Chris. Trustee Gomez?
Thank you all for coming out on our first back, day back on our live tour. It's good to see real human beings again and not just little pixels in a box of computer. I hope we can continue winning the war against this COVID-19 and this new variant, the Delta there, and I hope the numbers keep dropping. So please, keep, get vaccinated if you choose to, and for those that don't, please wear your mask for your safety and those around you. Let's, let's look out for one another, and please keep safe and healthy. And that's it. God bless. Good night. Please remember to always be kind to others, and that should come back to you.
Thanks, Jesus. Trustee Bierck?
Thank you. Is, this is on, okay. I'm going to be very short. Just welcome back in person. It's good to see people here. It's been a while. I just want to first thank the board for approving the land preservation plan tonight, for the work we initiate. I'm sure Neil Kraus can attest to this when I say this, a lot of work has gone into the committee's planning on this for natural resource protection as well as protecting the rural character of, of Woodbury and what's left of the rural character. You know, we've been meeting for the, over the past 10 months or so, twice a month, and we've had some of the most dedicated volunteers I've ever had the privilege of working with, and I'd really like to, to thank the committee for its professionalism, its dedication, and they're truly putting Woodbury before their own time. Many meetings run, how many hours, Neil? Two-plus sometimes on, on a Tuesday evening, so we have to finish before the voice comes on, I know, and we do. But again, I just want to thank the board for their consideration and as well as all of the dedicated volunteers that we have. Thank you very much. Have a good night and stay safe.
Thanks, Tara. Trustee Jacomoza?
Well, I initially did not have any board comments tonight. I was going to make this a very quick meeting so everybody can get home for the, weather comes in poorly, but now I feel the need to ask. You don't need to tape it, Martha. It's on tape. We're not going to edit it for content, okay? I am talking to you. You know what? I won't, I'll talk to you. So let me, let me talk about what Martha Lopez just addressed, and then I'll get into Mr. Hernandez's comments. So what Martha did was I had put up a social media post thanking Gary Thomasberger for his years of dedicated service to the town and the village of Woodbury. Martha responded on the congratulated, congratulations post about, Andrew, how did you treat him? Well, the fact of the matter is, is that Gary did not leave based on how I treated him or anybody else treated him, okay? I want you to know that I already spoke to my lawyers, my lawyer, about this, and I have one of those. I don't just happen to say it out loud, I do, because your comments affect the way or my ability to hire employees. Your comments affect the way this village has the ability to hire employees. I don't know where you get your information from, okay? Oh, yes, that's me. Okay, so listen, it'll be addressed, okay? It'll be addressed in court. And let me just tell you this, let me just tell you this, okay? The money I'm using will not be taxpayer money, unlike Jackie Hernandez, who used taxpayer money to sue her own residents, unlike Bob Hunter, who used his own money, who used taxpayer money to sue the residents. The money will come out of my pocket, and, let me finish, this is not a public hearing. Let me finish. Let me also tell you that I will only be suing one person, unlike Jackie Hernandez and Bob Hunter and Frank Palamo, who sued everybody, okay? Meanwhile, Mr. Hernandez decides he's going to make a T-shirt political. I got to be honest with you. If I was running against Anthony Spagna and Tim Finnegan and Kate Luciani, I would be nervous because they're decent human beings. For you to take and to, first of all, tell us that you support first responders, when your history in Woodbury is comical with your support of our first responders, okay? I could bring up the entire Richie Vasquez being forced out by the police department by you, or I can bring up, I, I, I can bring up, I can bring up, I can bring up the, also the rape allegation. I am attacking you.
Can we, can we keep this? This is board, excuse me, Mr. Hernandez.
Ray, Ray.
Mr. Hernandez.
Ray, we're done.
This is board member comment.
Okay? Really? You go to every meeting with Frank Palamo. Does Frank Palamo attack a resident in a meeting? I am attacking you because you came here and made a T-shirt political.
All right, all right. Let's, let's, please stop this. Let's, guys, guys, this is board member comment, please, 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 Ray. All right, all right. Guys, please, please, Andrew, please. Ray, please. Ray, please. All right, Andrews, please. All right, can I have a motion to close the meeting after no further? Actually, hang on, timeout. We haven't had board member, excuse me, department head comment.
Yeah, I got nothing.
All right, thank you. John, anything? Mickey? All right, thank you. Then can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.